Follow the meeting to orders.
We can do that. So in compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law, under COVID-19 emergency declaration, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conducts its meetings according to Robert's rules of order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in in the meeting have the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raised hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raised hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raising icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located at the bottom of the WebEx screen. Back to the next panel, girl. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being live streamed via YouTube. We have provided a link to the meeting for those who wish to speak on a particular case via our website and email. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. With that, Chair, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. So who's calling the roll? Is Michael in?
Michael is in.
Hey, Michael, can you call the roll, please?
Sure, of course. Bowen.
President.
Downing.
You're there, okay. I see that you're there, but I can't hear you. Curry.
President. President.
Slide. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. So who's taking Maurice's place?
Hi, yeah, this is Joe Stravion with City Planning. Maurice has some family business. Yeah. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. How are you doing today?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. You're gonna have to tell us who raises their hand and all that kind of stuff because I can't see it.
I will be on it. I'll let you know.
Thank you very much. So the first one is a special presentation on art, community mural, seeking final approval. This is at 13014 Miles Avenue. Tara, are you on the phone?
I am here.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Commission. I'm Tara Petras, Public Art Coordinator with the City of Cleveland. The first presentation that you all will see will be presented by Amanda Kramer from Union Miles Development Corporation. They are seeking final approval on a mural of Inez Killingsworth, a community activist and founding member of the Union Miles Development Corporation. They did go before the Southeast Design Review District on Wednesday, and they got unanimous approval with the conditions of cleaning up additional portions of the wall as well as adding some landscaping beneath the mural. And they are seeking retroactive approval as the mural is already up in anticipation of Ms. Killingsworth's family coming in. And moving forward, they are going to operate as a partner with us with educating the building owners about adhering to the public work, I'm sorry, the outdoor works of our ordinance and getting these approvals beforehand. So with that said, I do support the mural. I think it's a beautiful piece of work and a wonderful way to pay homage to Ms. Killingsworth who passed away some years ago. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Amanda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. As Tara said, we are doing this approval retroactively. My apologies for that. There were some outline conditions, and that's not really an excuse. Going forward, we do plan to bring anything that we may think needs to go in front of this board to Tara's attention sooner. So with that said, I'll just, I'll get things moving because I'm sure that we have a big agenda today. So next slide. So this is our service area. We're on the southeast side of Cleveland, if you're not familiar. We kind of share our borders with Mount Pleasant, Slavic Village, Lee Harvard. Next slide. This is the location of the mural. The blue box is the actual church that the mural is placed on, and it's near the intersection of 131st and Miles. It's obviously a very busy intersection. It's a gateway to our neighborhood. So we thought that this location was a really great spot to to honor Inez. Next slide, please. So the mural is about seventeen feet by thirty-eight feet, which is six hundred forty-six square feet. The total wall is about seventeen hundred square feet, so it is a large portion of the wall. The work was done by Mr. Soul, who was, if you recall, the artist of our last mural that was brought before this board. He has done really great work and he's been really wonderful to work with, and we think he's done a really nice job. And as Tara said, this will honor Inez Killingsworth, who is U M D C's founder and was a diligent community activist, has done a ton of work in the community, and I can't tell you how many people who have already said that they knew her or had heard of her and felt really impacted by this piece. The mural was unveiled on Tuesday, so there was a small little ceremony with her family who had come in from out of town. Another issue with the timeline there, so that, but it was very well received. It's, everybody was really pleased with it. This slide is just an excerpt from our master plan that we updated in 2018, which showed a community desire for increased art in the neighborhood. It's kind of a public art desert in the community, so we are trying to work on that. So this was just another step in that process. This is the actual church that the mural is located on that's on Miles, and just to the left of that is the Dollar General that Union Miles actually owns that building, and we are landlord there, so we have some some buy-in with the neighboring property, too, so that's helpful. That's the large white wall that the mural is now on, which you'll get to see here in a minute. And that's just the intersection that it goes to, which is the 131st and Miles. That large building in the corner over there is the Inez Killingsworth Permanent Supportive Housing Structure. So her name is kind of plastered all over the neighborhood, especially in this spot. And that's just looking westward, just the train tracks and sandwiched between two dollar trees, basically. So this is the the piece. This is pretty much how it looks. The only things that is missing in that ribbon there, it does say her name and her years of life, so it's nineteen thirty-eight to twenty thirteen, I believe. But that's really the only change. As Tara said, we did go in front of design review on Wednesday, and there were some concerns with the condition of the rest of the of the side of the wall, and I brought that to my director, and we're kind of working towards seeing where we can add some funding or maybe look for some grants to to fix the rest of the wall up. And then the property owner, because the mural was approved really quickly, and we were on a deadline with weather, they they cleaned it up, and landscaping was there, and they actually removed a lot of it because it was not in good shape. So I think that they are planning to add some more in the future.
Commission members?
I move approval. Downing.
Second, Paul.
Motion second, further discussion. Eric Nun, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Curry.
Yes.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is Beacon sidewalk decal.
Introduce this particular public art project. This is something very different than what I brought you before with regard to arts. Usually we have art on walls. This is something to have that presents an opportunity to have art on a sidewalk and create a fun and engaging piece of art that also activates fun conversation. It can become a conversation piece. So the location is 515 Euclid Avenue at Beacon, and it was approved by the downtown flat design review committee unanimously on October fifteenth, which was yesterday, for a one-year installation. It, again, I especially enjoy this art because it's something we haven't seen. It's something we've seen at chalk festivals, but not really anything that we've seen here in Cleveland in a semi-permanent application. So with that, I'm expressing my support, and I'm going to turn this over to Stacy Schmidt of Stark Enterprises. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. I appreciate that. Hello, everyone. My name's Stacy Schmidt from Stark Enterprises, and then we're a real estate company. We currently are requesting approval for an art piece that will go in front of the Beacon, which is our newest high-rise development on the corner of Euclid and Sixth. We're trying to increase the activity and vibrancy of that corridor. After the riots, we've made sure that we have implanted a lot of new beautified elements on that corner. Just put in plant boxes with pretty flowers, and we're looking at covering a vault that is on the ground in front of the Beacon. You could go next. So it just will, we were looking to evoke a little bit of emotion, excitement. It's a perspective piece that we would like to be used as a little bit of a conversation piece, as well as Instagram-worthy moments. So next. This is the location of the vault that is currently right to the left of the canopy. So this is the Beacon canopy on Euclid. The cement slab is eight by twelve feet, is located directly in front of the Potbelly's location, which we are the landlord of Potbelly's and Balance Grill of the entire building, as well as the garage behind it off of Sixth. We purchased the building a few years ago that was a parking garage, and then continued to build the twenty-nine floor high-rise on top of the property to help enhance the community. We have been leasing for about a year and want to continue just to help create the corridor and make it an entertaining activity space. Right, next. So this is what the ancient ruins perspective piece would look like, a foil-based decal. It lasts about a year. It's non-slip and durable. We are going to fill the cement joints or spill the joints in with cement to help make sure that it's a smooth surface before the foil-based decal would be installed directly onto the cement. We would like to be able to install it as soon as possible, but the temperature needs to be above fifty degrees for over twenty-four hours. So if we can't do it in the next month or so, we might need to wait until next March or April. But we're going to cross our fingers and and hope that if this gets approved, we can do it prior to the wintertime coming. I have a video if you at all can see. I'm going to see if I play it. It's just of the material. If you can see, it's a little bit more of a, I'll see, I put my finger on it. It has a raised bed. It's non-slip-proof. It's very durable. We'll make sure it's been used. It's a local company called Speed Pro, and they've installed it in a couple locations. They were trying to get me some samples before this meeting. I apologize. I could not get that. I have some new perspective views from either side that I can show you as well. Next. I think this is just showing us exactly where it's located. Again, this is the Beacon, and it's right to the right of the front door. Okay, next, please. The quality of the material and exactly what the specs are for the foil, non-slip durable material. Next. And these are just a few of the designs that they have done in the past and and what they look like. So again, it lasts about a year, a little bit shorter, a little bit longer, and as soon as it would come, if it starts to peel up or do anything that would not look beautified, then we would make sure we'd remove it right away. And I would greatly request your approval permission. So thank you for letting me present.
Thank you. Commission members?
Quick question for Tara. Does this require any sort of approval from Capital Projects, just as it's in the right of way?
Stacy is going through the permitting process with Greg Esver and Capital Projects to adhere that to the sidewalk. They actually sent it to me initially. They're approving it.
Move on.
I'll second.
Who's second? I couldn't hear.
August. I didn't have it.
Okay, thanks, August. We have a motion second, further discussion. Call the roll, please. Yes.
Downing. Diane, I'm sorry. Booker. Curry. Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Lot consolidation, lot splits. This is for periparcial number one zero six, one three, zero nine three, and zero nine four, one six three three, East Seventieth Street. Who's here to speak to this one? Who's here for this?
One moment. I think it's Shannon Leonard with us at City Planning.
Okay.
No, actually, Drew, it's Lisa Priya. She's the property owner, and I do see her name here.
Okay.
Oh, is she? Okay, great. Lisa, are you on? Hello?
I've unmuted her.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you. Yeah. Speak in the back.
Okay. I'm getting away from the computer.
Okay.
I'm proud of you. Poor people that are married in the past.
It's pretty hard to hear.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, is it here?
A little bit. Go ahead, please.
Your appliance is about five dollars.
Why don't we change to the next slide so we can see? Hello?
Mr. Chairman, it's actually a consolidation of two parcels into one.
Okay, maybe, Michael, you can explain this a little bit. Are you familiar with that?
I'm not familiar with it, though. It was sent to me by Pete Garloff of Riverstone Survey. We do have a presentation, so there's a little bit more to it. You can see some existing conditions, photos, and context. I don't know what the end result of the consolidation is meant to be, though.
Lisa, can you tell us what the end result is supposed to be?
Maybe calling in really somebody better.
I would suggest we table this until applicant is prepared to communicate.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Good news, I guess. Chair to the applicant, maybe it would be helpful, because it looks like you called in and are on the computer. Try muting your computer audio so that we don't hear the reverberation. Oh, that sounds better. Are you still on the phone?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, still got a nickel or something.
So what's the end result supposed to be for? You have a lot consolidation?
Yes, what we wanted to do is buy the side lot next to a house that we already own.
And what are you gonna do with the side lot?
I was gonna put a fence, they told me to put the driveway, but it wasn't long. It's yard, huh?
We can't hear you.
The house is old, and it doesn't really have the yard. So we wanted to create a yard for it.
Okay. Can you change to the next slide so you can see? Oh, okay. Next slide. That's the end of the presentation? So these houses are pretty, they have a lot of side yards to them.
So just so I'm clear, we're consolidating the home with the land in the West.
So this is the house they own, and they're trying to get the side lot that we're looking at right now. And consolidate it to one parcel.
Mr. Chairman, this looks pretty straightforward.
Motion in second, further discussion?
Yes, it's August. This is around Lee Park, and I know there's plans. I don't know how this fits into ultimately what's going to happen there, so I assume it's been discussed with the CDC and they're in support of it.
Michael, do you know that?
Foundation, this is the first that I'm hearing of this, but what I know based on the plans for what's happening is that Terry has, Terry Robbins from the Sea Land Bank has kept great detailed notes about all the parcels that have been spoken for. And so that if it has made it through this part of the process, that means that Terry has verified that there is no planned development for this particular parcel, and we would be in favor.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, August? Thank you. So we have a motion in second. Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Free.
Yes. Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Next is mandatory referrals, approving the continuation of Cleveland Superior Arts Improvement District as a special improvement district in the city. Who's here to speak to this?
I believe it's Councilman Jones.
Councilman, are you on the call? Councilman? I see he's on the list here. Councilman?
I'm texting him.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to doing this in person again.
Yep.
David, this is Lily. There is something different today, like it's much slower, harder to hear and across everything. So I don't know if something's going on, but it's been better in previous meetings.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Could be the.
That thing in was difficult.
It could be the internet speed.
Charles, you get a hold of him?
Not yet. Should we move to the next thing and maybe circle?
To administrative approvals, that'll be quick.
Oh, he just said he's on.
Oh, is he? Councilman?
There he is.
Good morning.
How you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well, my friend. Doing well. Thank you guys so much.
So you can go on. We read the what it is. It's for the continuance of the Cleveland Superior Arts Improvement District.
Yeah, man, this is this is so exciting for us, man. You know, the Superior Arts Improvement District has been really one of the highlights, one of the highlights, man, of being in office this first term, really getting a chance to work with those amazing owners down there and also with Campus District. Challenges in that area, as you know, Board Seven, though we are home to a lot of amazing things, we also have some challenges around homelessness and making sure that we treat every individual with the the human dignity that they deserve. And with specific area, you have college students, you have business owners, and then you have, you know, our residents who are, or our constituents, rather, who are suffering from homelessness. And so that's been a real tough battle. But what I've enjoyed about working with Campus District and working on this Superior Arts Improvement District is that getting a chance to sit down with these business owners, some will probably say, oh, well, the owners, they don't care about these people. They don't really care. But come to find out, man, they really have a heart for, even though they want their businesses to be successful, they want their businesses to to thrive. But we've been discussing, how do we also take care of, you know, take care of those who are less fortunate? So with the help of some of these business owners, with the help of Campus District, with the help of the City of Cleveland, you know, we've funded different programs such as, you know, providing cleaning services, providing safety, also providing outside toilets. This has been something that we've been working on, as well as mental health experts who can assist some of our, some of some of our brothers and sisters who are not only experiencing homelessness, but experiencing, you know, mental health issues. So I'm really excited about this, the continuation of the Cleveland Superior Arts Improvement District. I think it's it's a beautiful thing, and I think that you have the right leadership of people there who don't just, you know, care more about business owners than they do anyone else, but they they they're caring about everyone and just trying to traverse through those different understand, levels of understanding between those who own businesses and those who don't have homes or those who are who are kind of in the middle, which is college students, right? Because we we sometimes experience that on, you know, the frustrations and struggles on both sides of homelessness and and trying to become business owners through college. So I'm really excited about it. I really, you know, hope that this great board will consider passing this and approving this continuation. I think that it's a very much of a benefit to our city, and I really appreciate. I think that it's very much of a benefit to our city and I really appreciate working with them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman, thanks for the uplifting story, appreciate it. Members?
I move approval, Downing.
Second, slide.
Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker. Curry.
Yes. Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you all so much. Thank you for all your work, thank you.
Administrative approvals, please take a look and then when I'll be ready for a motion.
I'll move approval. I think that's a great location for W R J District.
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion? Call the roll, please. Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
We had heard this previously, it's an unnumbered ordinance and I do, I put the ordinance as an administrative approvals. When we get the number, just so we have a paper trail of that ordinance number being processed by the planning commission.
Okay, was there only one administrative approval?
And that's just one. So Curry?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Near West Design Review, Barbara New Town Homes, New Construction Seeking Schematic. Who's here for this? And it's on the table, but I want to make sure we're ready to be started.
Yeah, Ron Tamsdett is on the phone, so, but he is available.
Ryan, are you there? Right now? Hello?
I think he was on earlier, but I don't see, there's only one calling number right now.
Okay, so let's, that's the back of the agenda, it's on the table anyhow. Okay. Near East Design Review. Who's here for this?
David, could we ask if, if folks speaking, if they put themselves on mute? There's still some, I'm hearing some background noise. It's just very loud.
Also, I want to make sure that during the vote, that we either slow down or make sure we confirm the last vote. I didn't hear my name, nor did I vote.
Yes, Stamy, I'm having some trouble hearing people even when I take the time, so I'm kind of looking for visual affirmation because I can't hear sometimes what, what you're saying, so just wanted to let you know about that.
Is Jermaine on the phone? Is that who's supposed to be speaking?
Yes, I'm, I'm here.
Oh, okay, good.
All right.
So you got conceptual approval, I'm gonna swear you in if you can raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, I'm Jermaine Brooks. First off, I want to say good morning to the chairman and the board. My name's Jermaine Brooks, I'm one-fourth of our W R J developers who's on the call as well as our architect of record, Three Square, with Brett Crandall and Leslie Horne. We have received conceptual and we're here for final schematic approval. Just want to say thank you. The project has been getting a lot of publicity and we want to just thank Neighborhood Design Review as well as your board for your wisdom and expertise. We've been listening and we've been modifying our plans to meet that criteria so we could design a great project. We know we have a long way to go, but our efforts and your efforts are not dismissed. So now I just want to pass it over to our architect, Brett, so he could go over the changes that we've made since we last were at the committee.
Hey Brett, I gotta, I gotta swear you in because I didn't hear that you got sworn in.
Yes, sir.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. Will you be sharing the presentation or should I, I don't have the option to share?
No, they're sharing the presentation. When you want them to move forward, just say next slide.
Okay, thank you and good morning. It's, it's great to be back after the conceptual approval. And so it's that we've made a number of changes, while they are subtle, they have made a big impact on the overall project. So we were, we're really happy to get the feedback that we did, both from the neighborhood review and from the planning committee. And so this is just a cover page, just the general parameters of the project. Again, the gross square footage is just shy of 6,000 square feet. The building stands 40 foot tall. There is a number of containers of 160 that make up a total of 64 units. And we are providing onsite 42 parking spaces, which is, as we know, 65% of the required parking. We will be seeking a variance to utilize parking and public transit on this project. We can go to the next slide. So just in regards to the project location, we're in the northeast side of the city at the intersection of the blocks of St. Clair Avenue, along East 72nd, between 72nd and 73rd. The clients, W R J, own eight consecutive lots along the middle of the block there. And it ties in the corridor between the park system along the lakefront and St. Clair Ave, you know, is a major thoroughfare, just off the freeway and heading directly downtown to that area. We can go to the next slide. So we've prepared a number of exterior renderings of the project just to show the materials and the scale and the visual interest the project has offered, as well as how we plan on tying it into the walkability of this district. Trying to build up again more of that neighborhood feel between the industrial area to the direct north, the neighborhood area of the surrounding media block and then the commercial corridor along St. Clair Ave. We can continue on.
We have a raised hand, Mr. Fluker.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. I'm still having issues with understanding the context and what's around it and the scale and sort of how things, how this relates to everything else around it. An aerial would be helpful. So just, I don't know if you have that information, I know we discussed that last you were here. Thank you.
Thanks, August.
Thank you, August. Yeah, that's, that's why we included the map view, but hopefully throughout the rest of the presentation, we can address some of that, but thank you for the comment. Taking a closer look at the entrance of the project, we took some of those comments to heart, whether it was a covered entranceway or whether it was completely open, we actually rearranged some of the units and plan to actually accommodate some support space to flank the front entrance ways, that we actually don't have a unit there at the entrance, not walking past residential windows at that front entrance, which also allowed us to expand the entrance ways, there's actually a lobby there where we can house, you know, mayhem and a service desk, et cetera. So we definitely took a closer look at that main entranceway and addressed it in the way that we're seeing here. Continue on. Just a close up, just seeing the scale of that entranceway and how it ties into the sidewalk there along 72nd. We can continue on. We got some comments back from the visuals of the side of the building, being mostly car traffic along 72nd. We wanted to engage some sort of visual interest on the two sides of the building, to the north and south elevations. And so we, we made an attempt here to embrace the entranceway, to kind of bring a warm element, kind of reach out and accept the people that are entering and exiting the building, while also adding some visual interest with the black and white stripes. Most of the material that we're seeing here is propose the exposed siding of the containers while using sheet metal to cover up the gaps between containers, is a design tool that we've utilized successfully in the past. We can continue on. This is an image from the rear of the building. One of the major changes that we've made, coming back for schematic approval, is that we took to comment the hearts of the neighborhood review and we've actually pushed the building forward to, to match the front setbacks of all the other buildings along 72nd Avenue. And what that allows is that now we have a bit more of a green space in the back that is a space that can be utilized by tenants as a dog run or an outdoor space that they can utilize. So this is giving a glimpse of kind of that green space that's up in the back that we have to work with. Continuing on. Just an aerial view that starts to depict what the scale of the surrounding buildings are to the north and to the south. We have a couple of brownstone apartment buildings that are in various conditions. To our understanding, some of them are going to be attempted to be rehabbed while others are slated for demolition. And then the block due to west of us is entirely residential, so a lot of single-family houses of various conditions, most of which that are standing are occupied. We can continue. Again, taking a look at the materials that we're proposing, not a whole lot of changes here since last time, though we did resolve kind of the guardrail systems that we'd be utilizing, would be, would be a rigid frame with a cable system in between. And we've shown an image here of what that could technically look like. Utilizing the container doors is a, is a successful strategy to save on cost and also provides privacy. Container doors are extremely strong and we weld them in a fixed 90-degree open position. And we're proposing to put a perforated metal cladding over the door hardware so that from a distance it reads as a solid plane, but upon closer inspection, if you were to really look closer at it, you could tell that it is actually a container door that's providing some of those balconies. Otherwise, metal panel on the front facade and exposed container on much of the rest of the building. Moving on. These are some photos of the existing conditions of the sites currently being used, just, you know, for a small agricultural farmer who's, who's raising some crops on the site and maintaining the property by mowing the lawns, depicting some of the buildings that are still standing to the north and to the south. And just, just the overgrown quality currently, but we do know that there is a bus route along 72nd and there also is a bike lane that we, we hope to engage with much more. Go to the next slide. So here are a couple more of the existing conditions. The two buildings on our left here, one is still existing. The other one has already been demolished, but they plan to demolish both of the buildings just because after doing some closer studying on them, that it would not be a cost efficient to save the structure in any way. And then just a reminder of the existing 65-foot tall building to the very south end of the block at the intersection of St. Clair Avenue. Go to the next slide. So here in elevation, we really wanted to take a chance to zoom out and August, hopefully this, this addresses closer of what you're looking for. Just showing the gradual progression of the scale of the block. I know last time we had talked about the four-story being a very comfortable fit. We got a lot of positive reactions from both of our design reviews on that comment. Just gradually working its way up to the tall building on the commercial corridor at the end of the block and showing it in context with the scale of the vegetation, the existing trees and the houses that are currently on the block. And then our next slide is another elevation with a, with a street section cut east-west, showing the industrial facility across the street and showing the residential neighborhood that shares the block with us and then continues on. Go to our next slide. So this is a rendered site plan showing the largest change, which is shifting the building forward to match the front setback of the other structures on the block. We also reconfigured the parking quite a bit so that we had an entryway directly from the ADA loading zones. And we also pulled the parking in slightly from the side setbacks, about three feet on each side to allow a sort of vegetation. And we would do some decorative fencing there as well to provide a visual barrier from the parking area. Next slide, please. So keeping in mind that as this project progresses past the point of schematic design, we will be engaging with a professional landscape architect, but at this time, just trying to look into a list that was provided by the Cleveland Historic Society and what we could, what we could use as approved indigenous plant species for this area. And looking at different techniques of shading. So the, so the number one there would be the shielding of parking areas. The rear of the building, we have a large manicured lawn of tenant use. Number three, we have smaller trees just to provide visual interest, break up that front facade. At the entrances of the two parking areas, we're providing some larger, more shade providing trees on the scale of like a maple tree. And then the, the largest area of planting would be between the building's front facade and the sidewalk, which would be a combination of flowers, small bushes and grasses that would, that would provide some cover and a lot of color, a visual pop right there at the front of the building. Next slide. This is a plot plan that shows the scale of the block that they're building on. The development is the eight consecutive lots that are pretty much right in the middle of the block. We are in communications, we have a shortlist of five general contracting companies that we have already been in communication with because we feel it's really important to create the, the whole team early on in the process to make this as a cohesive project as possible. And in those communications, all of the companies are aware of the extra two lots, which would be extremely useful for staging equipment and temporary facilities during the construction process, which would keep the streets clear. We can go to the next slide.
We have a raised hand, by the way, Mr. Bowen.
Who is it?
Mr. Fluker.
I was gonna make a recommendation and I didn't want to interrupt him again. I think all your pieces are here, I'm just gonna give you a sort of a recommendation. I would start globally with my presentation and talk about how this fits into the community first and sort of drill in. That's just my opinion, because this seems to be sort of out of sync and that's why I'm having problems following. Again, I apologize for any lack of you.
No, I really appreciate that comment, thank you. I'll certainly take that to heart for future presentations. So this current drawing that we're looking at right now is a site plan and container layout showing the 42 parking spaces, four of which are ADA acceptable, accessible, two of which are van accessible, the other two are typical vehicular. Showing the covered entryways at the front. You can see here the two allocated containers flanking the main entranceway that we'll use for supporting program and how we've configured the entranceway so that there's two forms of egress from the end point in the building within the acceptable distance. And showing up buildings that fold forward towards the street. We can go on to the next slide. So our unit mix has shifted just ever so slightly. Now we are providing 30- So our unit mix has shifted just ever so slightly. Now we are providing 34 of the studio apartments and 30 of the two-bedroom apartments, and that was in order to allow these gray containers that flank the entranceway to provide supporting program of janitorial services, mechanical space for the elevator, mailroom, and a service desk, which we will be detailing much closer as we move past the schematic level of design. And then finally, the last two slides. The typical apartment layout after the first level, for levels two, three, and four, would be the same, where you have the two-bedroom apartments on the outside edges so that they can have the egress windows, and the studio apartments at the inside. Next slide. And then the unit layouts themselves shifted slightly. The developers have opted to include laundry units for every tenant. Based on, you know, the current situation, we definitely feel that individualized laundry facilities is better suited for what's happening right now. Reducing the wall between the bedroom and the kitchen to a partial height wall so it would stop in line with the height of of the appliances, namely the refrigerator, just to bring some extra light into that studio bedroom. And then finally, the two-bedroom unit shifted slightly with the addition of a smaller full bath that provides more of a master bedroom for a two-bedroom, two-bath layout. And that concludes our presentation for our container on 72nd.
Thank you. Commission members?
I will move approval. Curry?
Second, Flucker.
We have a motion second. Further discussion?
I just want to say, I think it's a great project, and I think the creativity and, you know, also just the density. As I said last time you came, we really liked the project and look forward to actually seeing how it goes.
Thank you.
I'll add on to that, Mr. Chair, that it's just a great location. It really should, this is, I, there's an opportunity to mimic what we see on the Westlake front, on the Eastlake front, and this is really in a prized position for that. We've got the bike lanes. I'm actually would be excited to hear that we're gonna move forward with the parking variance because to me, if you put more cars on the street, it starts to slow down traffic and make it more practical to use the bike lanes, get up to Gordon Park, and really create for this part of the city what was happening on the park's side.
Thank you, Councilman. Any more conversation? Want to call the roll?
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Yes.
Three.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Proposed demolition of a commercial building seeking final approval. This is at 10502 Superior. Who's here for this?
This is Chris Shefton from Famicus Foundation.
Yeah, can you raise your right hand? I'm gonna swear you in.
Oh, I need to turn on my camera.
I trust you if you raise your right hand.
It's raised.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead.
So this is a property, next slide. This is a property that Famicus Foundation owns, as was mentioned, at 10502 Superior Avenue. It is the southeast corner.
I'm sorry, Chris, to interrupt you. It's Lillian. I just need to recuse myself from this one because we have some funding into this. I called it.
Okay, thanks, Lillian. Go ahead.
What is currently there is a former convenience store. The tenants vacated the property in early 2019, and in August of this year, a car actually hit the side of the building. And so we are attempting to get the building torn down before it becomes a safety, more of a safety nuisance. Next slide. So just for some context, this is the site location where the red marker is today. Next slide. More context. Currently, 105 is going through some construction, hence the orange barrels, but this sits, as you can see, at a very prominent location at the intersection. Next slide.
Is this getting over?
No, that's just, I think that's just the angle of the camera. Next, next slide. Additional site context. So this particular building actually sits next to a gorgeous building that was really recently acquired by Akeem Africa, the Historic John L. Center. And so we are hopefully doing his building a favor by tearing down this less historically significant building. Next slide. Oh, you can see, start to see from these photographs where the actual accident damage is, where the car actually ran into the building. But it's also important to note that obviously this is on East 100th Street, so there is an adjacent bus stop enclosure right past this building. Next slide. Just more context, close-ups of where the vehicle actually struck the building itself and actually where the bus depot is. Next slide. More photographs. And so again, the reason for the demolition is that, as you can see, the car definitely damaged the building. We have done the best we can for now to try to keep folks out of the building, and we've so far been successful. But we don't know, particularly with it getting colder outside, how much longer we'll be able to do that. And so that is why we are seeking this demolition.
Well, it's obviously not historically significant. It's like a red block. Commission members, I'll move approval. Slide.
Second, Paul.
We have a motion second. Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you so much, Commission members. We are as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, next is a proposed demolition of a two-and-a-half-story residential structure seeking final approval. This is at 10420 Kempton Avenue. Who's here? Is this Wu?
Uh, yeah.
Who's next to you? How are you?
Good. How are you guys doing?
Good. So you have the remainder of the pieces, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think you do, too. Okay, carry on.
This is kind of a short meeting for you guys. That's kind of good. All right, so we'll start. We're doing the proposed demolition of 10420 Kempton. Next slide, please. Next slide. And this, so this obviously has been condemned for a long time, since June of 2012. It really hasn't been brought up to code. It's been condemned, like I said, to the 12. They did try to rehab it at one time, but they haven't really done anything to it. Also, going, if you could just go slowly towards the pictures, the exterior is not terribly bad. It's not structurally compromised that bad, but it's just been sitting and is a hazard. And I believe the CDC commented that it's been sitting there for a while, so we're just trying to see if we can get this demolished. Those are the neighboring properties.
Nice picture of a tree.
And so as you can see, it's pretty gutted inside. The lack of color on those pictures.
Makes it more dramatic.
I move approval.
We have a motion second for demolition. Obviously, the structure is not historically significant, and it's a danger to the community. So call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Lillian.
Sorry, yes, just let me, my mistake.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Okay, next is a proposed demolition of a two-story mixed-use building seeking final approval. This one is at 11618 Superior Avenue?
Uh, yeah, so this is 11618 Superior. This one will be a little bit easier for you guys. If you could just slowly go through the pictures, the ceiling has collapsed, so it's structurally compromised. There's not much we can do to save the building. Unfortunately, it's on the main corridor of Superior. If you could just go slowly through the pictures, you know, I think the pictures are sometimes worth a thousand words. The exterior looks okay, but on the other side, and when you, next slide, or those are the surrounding properties. And then like, as you can see, it's collapsed. You could just slowly go through those. That'd be great.
I move to approve demolition.
Second.
Just a quick question. It's on the corner of Superior and what?
It is Superior. Let me double check for you.
Lakeview. In Lakeview, Lillian.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we have a motion second. Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker. Curry.
Yes.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Proposed demolition of a two-story mixed-use building seeking final approval. This is at 7511 St. Clair Avenue?
All right, yes, this is 7511 St. Clair. This one had fire damage, and subsequently, due to the fire, it has water damage. But this one's also structurally compromised, and it's got a lot of taxes, and it's probably gonna be, and it's already been forfeited to the state. It's probably not gonna be a project that's gonna be worth saving. So if you could just slowly go through the pictures, and then, you know, the, maybe you can make a decision based on that.
So the architecture's been changed quite a bit.
I mean, I think at one time, it would have probably been a nice building. It's unfortunate.
I move to approve demolition.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve demolition. Not historically significant, and from the photographs, looks like it's getting ready to fall down. So call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker. Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Okay, approved. A proposed demolition of a two-story mixed-use building seeking final approval. This is at 7533 St. Clair.
All right, so 7533 St. Clair. This one does actually have some architectural value. So I had to go inside it, but it looked like the floor is about to collapse, and in August, it looked like a portion of the wall started to collapse. So, you know, unfortunately, this is too far gone to save as well. And so if you could just slowly go through the pictures, I mean, it looks, I mean, it looks less than architectural value on the, you know, the front, but if you can continue here, as you can see in August, that portion on 76th, I believe, the wall's starting to collapse totally. So, you know, I don't think it's at the point of saving. These are the interior photos I was able to get in, but like I said, the floor is compromised and it's ready to, you could easily fall in.
I move approval. Downing.
Flucker.
We have a motion second. The architecture probably at one time wasn't bad, but that whole side of the wall looks like it's caving in, and because of the interior condition, it's unsavable at this part. So call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry. Lillian.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's go. Thank you. Is Ryan on for this Barber Avenue Townhomes? I guess not. So I'll adjourn the meeting. Anthony, is there a director's report?
There is no director's report today.
Okay. Well, Commission members, you're off early. Enjoy your weekend.
Good job, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, everyone. Good job, Drew.
Thanks. Take care, everyone.